And his gun's way bigger than yours, have to be careful.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. Tonight is a special council meeting for us in that we will be conducting interviews for our council vacancy. We have eight candidates that we will be interviewing this evening. I will read them out loud. Actually, what I will do is ask the clerk to read them out loud in the order that they will be interviewed. We did draw names out of a bucket in front of all of the interviewees just a few moments ago to determine the order. So, Lisa?
So first is Young Kaprowski, second will be Todd Jorgensen, third is Jan Simon, fourth is Kathleen Dowler, fifth is Scott September, sixth is Bill Spence, seventh is Amanda Shaffey, and eighth is Noah Mund.
Thank you. For those who are participating via phone, my name is Jen Daniels, the mayor of Gilbert, and I will have the council members go through and introduce themselves as well. Council member?
Jordan Ray.
Amy Yentes.
Scott Anderson.
Bridget Peterson.
Karen Taylor.
We have six published questions that we will be asking, and we will go through those same questions and in the same order. We are not allowed to do any follow-up questions. Are they on the phone or on the video? Okay. We'll do a two-minute recess while we figure out the sound from the building. Thanks.
The people that messaged me, I think, are watching TV. So Cox Channel 11? Okay, thank you.
We'll ask members of the public to communicate with us quickly via email if they are having a difficult time, or if they happen to know any of us personally, to text us. That would be good, which is a possibility. All right, terrific. Of course. At this time, we will ask the clerk's office to invite Young Kaprowski to the council chambers. And just understanding the situation that we are in, I will give a brief update while Young is joining us. This meeting is closed to the public, but obviously being broadcast in multiple ways in order to have the public participate. As of today at 4:00 PM, all of our town buildings are closed to the public. And so we will...I had to pause for a minute. Okay. We will be finding additional ways between now and next Tuesday when we have our other council meeting to ensure that we are following the protocol and ensuring that our public has an opportunity to speak. We're getting feedback that the video feed is still not working from a volume standpoint. Sound, can we double-check?
She said she's on her phone and on her computer, and it says the video file is not found.
I hear live...I get feedback that livestream is working well. Someone messaged me, says we're watching it on livestream. So it sounds like that's working well.
Maybe it's a issue with the browser?
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Young, I'm going to have you wait for just a second. Apparently, we're having technical difficulties. So if you want to sit for just a second, I apologize.
Perfect.
We just realized that that was an issue. Thanks. Okay, I think we might have access now. I've heard Chrome might be a better browser, if that's an option for you. We'd like to direct you there. It's my understanding we do have sound, and it's working. Terrific. Just real quick, Lisa, can you just go over the format? Obviously, each of us will be asking a question, but the timing for everything else?
Yes, ma'am. So there's two minutes for the opening comments, three minutes for each question, and then one minute closing.
Thank you. All right, Young, sorry to make you wait. Do you want to come to the podium and then introduce yourself for everyone that's on the phone and watching from home?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name's Young Kaprowski. I've been a resident of Gilbert for 12 years. I'm a professional civil engineer, and I live with my husband and two children in northwest Gilbert. They attend Gilbert Public Schools and participate in several community activities. I launched my own engineering consulting firm, Y2K Engineering, three years ago to be a role model for women and inspire future generations. It gave me the flexibility to be closer to home, to aid my father-in-law during his final months as well, so that was really important to me. I specialize in traffic engineering, bicycle and pedestrian design, safety and transportation technology. I strive to deliver innovation and deliver resilient infrastructure for our clients. My commitment to employees is to prioritize life satisfaction. I currently have 13 employees. In 2016, the American Society of Civil Engineers recognized me as one of 10 new faces of civil engineering nationwide for my contribution to the industry and community. Last year, the Phoenix Business Journal recognized me as a 40 Under 40 Honoree due to my growing successful business and giving back to the community through my involvement with Habitat for Humanity Central Arizona. I've served on the boards of three professional organizations in the past 13 years, a condominium HOA board for six years, of which I was president, and am the charter president of the Habitat for Humanity Young Professionals Group. My background as a professional transportation engineer will provide knowledge and perspective necessary to inform key transportation, public works, infrastructure, and public safety decisions for the town of Gilbert. My experience as a successful business owner and employer will lend well to economic issues. My role as a mother of two and being a child of aging parents may add credibility and representation of these populations when it comes to decisions related to quality of life, schools, and parks and recreation.
Thank you, Young. Councilmember Taylor?
Young, thank you for being here and being part of the process. Congratulations on being one of the finalists. We're all looking forward to hearing from you and hope you feel relaxed and share some of your thoughts. We're anxious to hear, and I've got some notes to take. But the first question here, as you know, is we'd like to know, what is...what are your views on the proper role of our town government?
Sure. So I grew up in the county island of Chandler Heights without the benefit of town services. I lived on a dirt road that's still a dirt road today. There is still no sewer infrastructure. We had a septic tank, and I remember my parents flushing down chicken skins to add good bacteria. My dad hauled our trash to the dump. The main road, Hunt Highway, has no shoulder and drops off into deep sand. There was very limited fire or law enforcement protection. From these experiences, and as a civil engineer, I appreciate the value that living in a town or city brings. The town of Gilbert possesses a local government in the form of a town council. The proper role of town government is to provide services to its residents. This is a long list for Gilbert. We provide a lot of services. The most critical are fire, medical rescue, police, water and wastewater, and solid waste pickup, transportation infrastructure, and traffic operations. It's very important that these services are maintained with little to no interruption. The town is also responsible for land zoning and enforcing its municipal code and land development code. The town reviews and approves new development construction, as well as registers and licenses new businesses. You approve general plan and zoning amendments, keep apprised of and are involved in over 15 boards, commissions, and committees. You're responsible for setting policy, forming committees and programs, along with serving on a multitude of local and regional boards as well. Gilbert is also really fortunate to have wonderful parks, recreation, and cultural programs. That makes it a very special place and highly desirable for families to live. Once the town builds something new or begins a new program, it's also really important to recognize the continual effort and funding required for operations and maintenance over time. Overall, the role of town government is to create a sense of community, improve quality of life, and create a secure and enjoyable place to live.
Thank you.
Hi, Young. It's nice to meet you this evening. Thanks for being here and being part of the process. What should be the town's transportation priorities, both long and short term, and how should the town fund transportation priorities?
So I'm really passionate about this topic, so I'm going to try to keep it within three minutes. Being a transportation professional and serving on the Gilbert Citizens Transportation Task Force the past three months, I have a wealth of knowledge about local, regional, state, and federal transportation initiatives. The town is responsible for developing and maintaining its transportation system. The town's transportation policies and priorities are a key factor in sustaining quality of life for our residents. Some areas are fully improved, while the southeast portion of the town requires new infrastructure to support development. The existing transportation systems require regular maintenance, upgrades, and replacement over time. The Town Public Works Department has already developed a data-driven, long-range infrastructure plan, which includes an asset and infrastructure inventory with recommendations for their useful life, lifecycle, and replacement costs. Part of this plan includes recommended maintenance programs to extend useful life and optimize operations. Short-term transportation priorities are also identified in the town's capital improvement program. Extensive local and regional planning, which includes data analysis and public involvement, informs the projects in the CIP along with council directive. The town has traditionally utilized general obligation bonds to fund transportation infrastructure projects. The last street bonds were authorized in 2007, and they have been spent. Other funding sources have been researched and are not sufficient to bridge the gap in our needs. The Citizens Transportation Task Force will be recommending that the town council move forward with a general obligation bond election for transportation for the purpose of maintaining and enhancing the town of Gilbert's transportation system with projects that address congestion and safety challenges, add and enhance multimodal connectivity and transportation technology, and support transportation in redevelopment areas. The town also leverages funding from the county's half-cent sales tax, which currently funds freeway, arterial, and transit programs. Development is underway for an extension of this tax, which may include active transportation, which is walking and bicycling, safety and transportation technology. I believe the town could do a better job of leveraging federal funding for planning, design, and constructions of projects related to safe routes to school, multimodal transportation alternatives, transportation safety, and intelligent transportation systems. The local match would only be 0% to 10%, and I can help the town do this with my extensive experience working with other communities in the region.
Young, it's a pleasure to meet you tonight. My question is, having observed the council over the last few months or years, where can the council improve, and what can the council keep doing well?
I'm really proud to be a Gilbert resident, and I'm really pleased of the job that the council and all of the hard-working Gilbert staff has accomplished over the past few years. The town has had so much to announce, along with its 100th birthday, including new parks and a cemetery...two new parks and a cemetery. Gilbert Kindness Student Ambassador Programs and Gilbert Digital are excellent programs and initiatives. It's evident that the town council has positioned the city for future growth and has worked hard to attract new employment centers to diversify our community. Keeping up with population growth is and will continue to be a challenge. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, between 2000 and 2010, Gilbert was the fastest-growing large city in the country with a population increase of 90%. The population in Gilbert increased 22% in 2019 alone, and 1/3 of that population is under the age of 18. This fact, I believe, will drive many upcoming decisions. One of those, I believe, will be important to start preparing for, is having novice drivers and road users on our roadways, which will result in a higher number of motor vehicle collisions and associated injury. We can start now with education on the role parents and students play, and good habits and practices to develop in order to stay safe within our transportation system, whether that's walking, bicycling, or traveling by motor vehicle. I think the council should consider moving the trail system under the Transportation Department instead of Parks and Recreation, where it's managed currently. Doing this allows the transportation-focused staff to position Gilbert for regional and federal funding opportunities, linking the street network to the trail network. Taking this holistic approach and look at the on-street and off-street multimodal systems allows for a stronger active transportation planning and the creation of policies to build safer systems. I'm currently helping the town analyze its crash data and evaluate 46 trail crossings. We should be focusing on moving people, not cars. I'd like to position the town of Gilbert to take advantage of federal-funded programs that will enhance the community. I've worked with neighboring municipalities and the American Association of Governments on numerous federally-funded planning and design projects. One of these is the Safe Routes to School program, which I'm really passionate about. These programs encourage healthy lifestyles that can last and extend a lifetime, and it has the potential to play a key role in transforming our town into a more pleasant and healthy place to live. I've also prepared grant applications and worked on intelligent transportation system projects and bicycle facility projects using congestion mitigation and air quality grant funding. Additionally, reducing serious injury and death caused by crashes is a worldwide challenge. I've prepared several successful grant applications for regional and federal safety improvement projects. I was involved in preparing the City of Tempe's Vision Zero Action Plan.
Hi, Young. Based on our current financial policies and tax structure in Gilbert, what recommendations will you suggest or consider?
Honestly, I should...I'd like to just say that the town should keep up with what they're doing. The town received a AAA bond rating upgrade in June of 2019. Standard and Poor's stated, "Their raised ratings reflect our view of the town's robust economic development, which has improved wealth and indicators to strong levels." The continuous growth has driven stable increases in ongoing revenue, supporting our view of the town's strong budgetary performance, which is further reinforced by what we consider very strong financial management policies and practices. In the past nine years, the town has saved over $100 million by refinancing into better rates and paying off bonds before their due date. As I mentioned earlier, the Citizens Transportation Task Force will be recommending that the town council move forward with a general obligation bond election for transportation infrastructure projects. Residents likely have many questions about this, which we don't have time to answer here, but one of the important ones is, will my property tax rate go up? The current rate is 99 cents per $100 of assessed value. The soon-to-be-proposed bonds are recommended to be funded within this existing rate. Therefore, there is no anticipated increase in the current rates. This was a really important component for the task force. We recognize the need for town improvements, but also recognize that some of our residents are on a fixed income and can't easily absorb a tax increase. I believe that with my background from the construction and public works industry, I can provide immense value to the town council to ensure the right questions are being asked, and that decision-makers, including voters, have good background information and explanation for what decisions they're making today can lead to for our future generations. I recognize that infrastructure is just one component of a much bigger picture regarding financial policies and tax structure in Gilbert. I will work collaboratively with mayor and other council members, staff, and residents to ensure that I complete the due diligence required for any topic, to make informed decisions that are in the best interests of the town.
Thank you, Young, for your work on the Transportation Task Force. You've done a great job with that. What would be your top priority to improve Gilbert's long-term sustainability and quality of life?
My immediate top priority would be to support the mayor and council and the town in anything related to the current state of emergency, particularly providing thanks and support to town staff that are working diligently to maintain the critical services, including fire, medical, rescue, police, water and wastewater, and solid waste pickup, transportation infrastructure and operations. In all seriousness, if toilet paper is not available, we'll need to educate our residents on the consequences of what's going to happen if they start flushing wipes or other objects. Another top priority would be to get up to speed and participate in the town's financial retreat to set budgets and potentially approve a transportation bond. If approved, educating the community on the importance of the transportation bond would remain a top priority for me. If passed, the bond will fund infrastructure projects that address safety improvements at trail crossings, capacity improvements to relieve congestion in our arterial roads, reconstruction projects to fill the gaps in existing streets and replacing aging infrastructure, multimodal projects to support accessible transit services, micro-mobility, bicycling, and walking. Transportation technology solutions could be implemented to make our system more efficient and ready for advanced technologies. The bond would also fund implementation of the Heritage District Redevelopment Plan, which would call for more multimodal infrastructure. In the 2019 citizen survey results, which is a nationally administered survey, the areas of improvement identified were public transportation, traffic flow, and affordable quality housing, each with only 31% of positive responses. I think my background in transportation engineering and through my community service involvement with Habitat for Humanity the past 15 years, I can lead and support initiatives that could really improve the areas of traffic flow and affordable housing. My priorities also align with the top priorities identified by the residents in the 2019 citizen survey, which I believe Gilbert is currently doing really well with achieving, and that is in regards to safety and security and the economy. And I would want to continue to support those.
Thank you, Young. You made it to the last question. Congratulations. You're doing a terrific job. The last and final question is, what will be your contribution to the town of Gilbert as a council member?
I believe I would be able to positively contribute to the community and interact well with others. My background as a civil engineer and business owner will provide knowledge and perspective necessary to help make key decisions for the town of Gilbert specifically related to capital improvements. This is a key area that is not currently well-represented on the council. I have the ability to speak intelligently, articulately, and thoughtfully to demonstrate my understanding of issues, explain how my decisions are formed, and build consensus. I am respectful, polite, regardless of outcome, and will respect voters and the civic process. However, I will also make informed, data-driven decisions that are in the best interests of the town. Particularly in a state of emergency that we are in currently, I remain steadfast, logical, and prepared. I'm tech-savvy. In the event discussions and meetings need to be virtual, I'm willing to be a leader in the community amidst many fears and an unknown future. I am the median age of residents in Gilbert and would add diversity to town council. In all the leadership roles I serve, I also wish to be a positive role model for women, minorities, and young people.
Thank you very much. You can proceed with your closing statement.
If appointed to council member Cook's position, I do intend to fulfill the remainder of the term from January 2021 through January 2023, and I, along with my friends and family, are working to collect the necessary signatures to get on the ballot by the deadline of April 6th for the two-year term. Obviously, this is challenging, given the social distancing protocol being enacted. We're about 10% there. I don't want to make people uncomfortable by going door-to-door, so if you're a registered voter or resident of Gilbert...and resident of Gilbert, that'd be willing to sign my nomination petition, and you're listening to this or watching this online, please contact me or come to my home this week. I want to just extend a sincere thank you to mayor and all the council members here today for considering me for appointment to Gilbert Town Council. I believe I'm the right candidate, and I'm ready to hit the ground running at the upcoming financial retreat, which includes a proposed resolution for a transportation bond, which I've spent the last three months contributing to. Thank you.
Terrific. You were a great one to start with tonight.
Thank you so much.
And now you get to go relax, and everyone else doesn't. Our second interview tonight will be Todd Jorgensen. I believe he's on his way down now.
Mayor? Mayor, we are still having some technical issues with the software for the video stuff. The WebEx audio is working fine. IT says it could take about five to 10 minutes if we want to reboot the system, but it would take us offline, so we'd need to take just a little bit of a pause before continuing.
Are people online getting anything from a web? No, I mean, I'm talking about through the...
WebEx.
No, not through WebEx, through the Cox...
Oh, sorry. Through the...
People are still watching, and it's fine? It's just not as great?
Yes, through the website.
All right. Let's do one more interview. If anybody is having problems online, we'll shift them. Or should we just do it right now? Five to 10 minutes? Okay, we're rebooting.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll call a brief recess. Apologize to those on the phone. We want to make sure the public has a chance, and I'm glad we're working out all the kinks, because we may have several council meetings. I'm glad we're working out all the kinks, because we may have several council meetings coming forward where we will be doing this virtually. Meeting recessed for a moment.